The meeting to order. The Chairman, Garfield Parker, is not feeling well today. We've got a couple of other absences for various reasons. So I will be chairing the meeting. Stuart, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Chris Crowley.
Here.
Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Kost.
Hi there.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
As Mr. Kost said, Mr. Parker is not feeling well. Alan Garland. Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams also indicated he would not be in today, tonight. Heidi Welkens-Cory.
Here.
We do have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Heidi, would you give us an invocation, please? Excuse me, Vivian.
He's here.
You look so much alike.
We're sisters.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and we thank you for your grace. We thank you for allowing us to come together once again to do the work of the county. We ask for guidance and direction as we do it. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vivian. Do we have an agenda? Anyone need to make any changes to it at this point, or any?
I move the agenda be approved as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Passed minutes. Has anyone got any changes that need to be made to the minutes from the last meeting?
Move that the minutes be approved as written.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Okay. Commissioners' comments? Just walk around the room real quick. Roger, anything that you want to report?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Sir.
Okay, Heidi?
No comments.
Vivian?
No comment.
Patrick? One quick thing for me. I think we made mention of this at the last meeting, and Stuart, you can give us more insight if any. The recent Board of Supervisors meeting asked that the Planning Commission and Economic Development Commission get together and figure out what to do about these surplus properties again. The person who made the request and that they accepted was apparently unaware we had already done that. And so I have asked Karen Pika and Garfield Parker to get together and figure out a plan to when we meet or whatever. Largely, we've already completed the work. The four items that we suggested be considered investigated further were considered by the Board of Supervisors, and they were very interested. But then somebody said, "Well, what about the other 23?" Here we go. So we may be getting together again soon. We're going to try to shortchange that as much as possible, short-circuit that as much as possible to simplify it. That's my only comment. Okay.
Which other 23 was he talking about?
Well, there were 27 altogether. Four of them we suggested investigation. Twenty-three we said, eh. But apparently times have changed. As you recall, part of the context for that discussion is the county didn't need the money at the time. Times have changed.
How long ago was that?
Two years ago. Oh, Lord. Anyway, Stuart, any comments?
We do have another conditional use permit for next month. That's in the hopper.
Okay.
I don't have a lot of details on it, but another public hearing next time.
Any update on the filings with the state on the comprehensive plan?
I sent out the comp plan to DQ, VDOT, and the Department of Forestry asked if I'd send a copy to them as well. Department of Forestry got back to me and said that, asked if we would like updated numbers for our forest information. And I said, "Yeah." So we'll have to consider that when we get to other comments as well. DQ said they would have it done by October 15th, I believe, and I have not heard anything back from VDOT regarding it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the update. Now, this next thing, this is not for the public hearing part. This is the time we ask for any citizen comments. You're here for a specific purpose. I suspect you're here for an agenda item as well, so there's no further public comments. Is everybody online?
Three people are online.
Okay. Any citizen comments for people online not related to the public hearing for this evening? Hearing none? We'll move on. So we need to call the public hearing to order at this point. Stuart, is there anything I need to be saying at this point since I'm new at this game?
No, I can just announce that this public hearing is a request by Lauren Twells and Jeanette Bonifaz Querzu. I'm sorry if I butchered that. Owners for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on property zone R3, residential restricted. The property is shown as tax map 45B, double circle three, block one, lot 14, and is located at 164 Bay Shore Avenue. And I think the only person that signed up for the sign-up sheet is the applicant, but I'll go ahead and get the sign-up sheet.
All righty. Would you like to say anything about what you want to do here and why?
Sure.
Yeah, please.
We have just a letter that we wrote to all of our immediate neighbors when we moved in, just kind of explaining that. So I'll just read that for you guys here today. All right, so he said, "Dear neighbors, we wanted to share an update with you about our plans for 164 Bay Shore Avenue and how we're thinking about its use moving forward. This home is incredibly special to us. It's not just a vacation property. It's a place we plan to enjoy often with our dogs Charlie and Finley and our family and friends. Reedville and the Fleeton Beach community captured our hearts from the moment we found it. In fact, one of you recently asked how we even discovered this area. And the answer is simple. It was Airbnb. In September 2024, I stayed in a home just a mile up the road in a community much like this one. Between the peacefulness, the charm, and the natural beauty, I was hooked. Six months later, I returned with Jeanette, my wife, and our dogs, and within just three months, we were proud to call Fleeton Beach home. We believe others will feel the same awe and appreciation we did, and that's the spirit in which we're choosing to open our home to short-term renters. We do not intend to rent full-time. The goal is to offset a small portion of the monthly costs of the property, continue enjoying it ourselves and with our family on a regular basis, and share it occasionally with others who we believe will fall in love with the space just as we did. That said, we're committed to doing this the right way. Any rental activity will be handled with great care and attention to the peace, privacy, and character of this remarkable neighborhood. We want to protect what makes this community so special, not change it. To that end, here are a few of the measures that we will be putting in place, if approved: security cameras to monitor arrivals and departures; strict guest screening, including only accepting renters with at least five positive reviews; clear quiet hours and posted community rules, including property boundaries, local speed limits; no promotion of private community features, example, beach access in any public listings; in-app and in-home reminders about gravel roads, speed limits, which are a very big concern in our neighborhood, understandably, and community expectations; and full compliance with county requirements in going through the, including going through the formal application and approval process, which is what brings us here. We're also open to ideas, and we generally welcome any tips or suggestions from longstanding community members, especially things we might not think of that could help us to be more mindful when hosting visitors. While we've stayed in over 25 Airbnbs ourselves and maintain a five-star rating as guests, and we know what makes for a respectful visitor, we also understand that every community is unique. We'll be holding our guests to the same high standard we hold ourselves to while being thoughtful about the distinct character of Fleeton Beach. We hope you'll support us in this effort, and we look forward to supporting you as neighbors for many years to come." So that's a little bit about what we're looking to do, just to offset some of the costs of this initial purchase when we are not in the property ourselves. We've been here for, since July 26th, the day after we closed, and we've been here ever since. We haven't come back to our other home. Getting to know the community and all of our neighbors, and we're just glad to be here. So thank you.
Your letter is very well-written. What's the date on that? How long ago did you send that?
Let's see. We actually didn't put a date on it, but we can check. We texted it to a few neighbors, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was August 6th.
August 6th, so a little over a month ago. Okay.
And did you have any response from your neighbors?
Yeah. Some of them, our colleagues, some of them via text. They said, "Thank you for the letter, very thorough. We appreciate it and support you." There was, we have.
So you got positive feedback from your neighbors? Very well done.
Yes, yes.
I think that goes a long way.
Spoken to everybody in our immediate neighborhood. I was, folks have come to stop by and introduce themselves and us them, and we've heard all concerns that we know to be true. Speed limit, huge thing. Kids, dogs, bikes, everywhere. Noise, I really think that's kind of it. Those are the main concerns. So we've heard directly from folks about what's on their minds.
Are you, or any of your other neighbors doing short-term rentals as well?
I believe one or two.
Okay.
In the Fleeton Beach community.
So they're kind of accustomed to it at this point?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two, I believe, in the neighborhood.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I have one question.
Hi, sir.
I didn't look at it on the text map. Is your lot on the water?
Yes, sir.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
On the bay side?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I can show a picture if you'd like from the application.
Just show. So whoever rents that would have access to the water in front of your property?
Yes, sir. We have private beach access just for our own.
Oh, you do? Well, that's awesome.
Yes, yeah, so no need to share. We also have a public HOA community beach, but we have our own property in our house, so.
They sit out on a little spit of land.
Can you point it? That's Stuart 164.
Yeah, it's where the red arrow is.
They really have no neighbors.
Yep.
And the other side.
I assume that's surrounded by armor-stone.
Yes.
Yes, the riverbed is, thankfully, very big.
Wow. It stayed on the United River when the wind was very strong.
Oh, yeah. Good.
Yeah, living in the Northern Neck is great, except for a couple of days out of the year.
I know, yes.
Yeah, like one last week, this past Tuesday.
That's right.
Yes, yes.
These, are you aware of these conditions that were suggested by the county?
I don't know.
We'll have Phillip talk to that in just a moment, okay? Any other questions besides that? Phillip, would you talk to your suggestions here and maybe share a copy if you have that with them, so they can look at it?
I've got a copy for them, and they're up on the screen here. Once I get it, the people can read it.
So Phillip is our zoning administrator. I don't know if you've met him already. He's part of the process.
Oh, yes, thank you. We're proud of him.
But he also is very helpful to us as a staff person in terms of suggesting things to do to help us do exactly what you said in your letter, so you want to run through that, Phillip?
Sure. The suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, ordinances, or rules concerning taxes, including transient occupancy tax. A smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector shall be located in each bedroom and in any other location required by the building code. There shall be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no on-street parking. The vacation home rental shall have an access driveway to a state highway with a sufficient 12-foot width, 12-foot height, and condition to accommodate emergency services, vehicles, and equipment. The vacation home rental shall register and maintain registration with the county's registry annually while operating. The vacation home rental shall register a local manager who possesses the authority and ability to promptly address and correct any violations of the conditions, use requirements and/or limitations applicable to the vacation home rental with the building and zoning office and the sheriff's office. This registry shall include the name, address, and telephone number of the local manager, and this shall also be posted in a conspicuous area of the vacation home rental. The vacation home rental's boundary line shall be clearly marked and identified for the occupants of the rental home. Recreational vehicles may be parked on the property but may not be used by guests for living quarters during their stay at the vacation home rental. Renters' pets shall be kept under control at all times. Overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons per residence. This conditional use permit is non-transferable and does not attach to the property if ownership changes. There shall be no golf cart use by the renters on the roads, and the applicant shall maintain liability insurance.
Phillip, are any of these non-standard, unique to this property?
They are standard to the other two rentals.
Number six, the issue of a local manager, is that something you're planning to do, or are you with it?
Yes, we're planning to do that ourselves, at least at first, and then potentially might find a different, more area manager, but we'd like to set it up and start it off ourselves to get a bill for the operations.
That's compliant?
Yeah. It would be on their registration statement when they register any.
Excellent.
In many cases, the, some office or generally the chairman of the homeowners' association is happy to fill that position.
Oh, okay.
Just if you need somebody down the road. I'm curious about number 12, why no golf carts?
This was specific to vacation rentals in R3 at the time and the opposition that we were receiving. So this matches the other two short-term rentals that are in Fleeton Beach. Do you care one way or the other?
We don't have one right now, but we will. I think we would not let people. Yeah. We, even if it was allowed, we would likely not. I understand why people would be concerned because, you know, it also depends, our home is very small, so usually the people who are going to come are going to be families or two or more people max. Well, all the houses sometimes have 15, 20 people, like when it's so warm, so a party atmosphere, they're riding around in cars, going on people's phones. I try to understand why they would not want that. We personally don't care, but we buy golf carts, we also don't want it to be ridden around by other people.
Okay.
There are some places in the Northern Neck, I'm sure you'll be shocked to discover that they are used as a way of trying to get around the DWI statute, which was amended some, several years ago to include golf carts.
Do you have any concerns about any of these conditions?
No, these all seem very reasonable, logical, standard to me. Nothing sticks out to me. And we had read them previously, though, as part of the application process.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
You want to open a public hearing? I mean, I don't know if anybody online wants to speak. There's nobody signed up.
Yeah, I was supposed to do that.
Okay.
So there's nobody here to speak on that that's signed up. I assume you're not here about that, Craig. Anybody online want to speak to the issue before us in the public hearing? Okay, doesn't appear to be any concern.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the tidal wave of opposition to this request, I move the issue.
We have to close the hearing first.
Oh.
Anything else at the public hearing? Okay. There being no further comment, I'm going to close the public hearing and go to the work session for the, for the Planning Commission. Before us is a request for a conditional use permit by two fine ladies from Fleeton Beach. Do we have any further comments or discussion?
I, it's this time for a motion? Okay. I move that the motion be approved, subject to the conditions stated by Mr. Marston. This motion is made in due consideration of the administrative record before the body, including the Planning Commission's deliberations and recommendations, the information received via the public hearing, including statements offered by staff, the applicants, and members of the public, the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices and the body's legislative prerogative and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
The motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and, made and seconded. Any further discussion about the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion's carried. Welcome to the community.
So, so the next step, we've recommended the Board of Supervisors for approval. And so there'll be another, another public hearing next month at the Board of Supervisors, and that date is a second Thursday.
October 9th.
October 9th. And that'll be, the public hearing will be at 7:00 PM. And then the board will do the same thing and ask for public comments, and then they will make the decision and vote on it. And then, then they have the power to do that, and then you will be good to go once that, once the board considers it.
Is there anything you recommend to prepare for that?
I think you did wonderful tonight.
Yeah, I think.
Your letter is very compelling.
Yes.
Maybe have it written out. There's five of them, one of them's a little harder hearing sometimes, so bring a hard copy.
Good intel. That's like me.
I wouldn't change a thing.
No.
I think it shows, I wish a lot of our people would take the time to talk to their neighbors first before coming to court. I think it goes the wrong way, and it's a job well done.
Shows respect.
And good luck with your endeavor.
Yep.
We love our neighbors, I think.
Great.
Well, I'm sure the Airbnb renters will love it too, so.
And maybe we'll get a few residents from them as well.
Yeah.
This concludes the exciting part of the evening. If you want to stick around, you have nothing better to do, feel free, but otherwise you don't have to worry. You're done.
We really appreciate our service and all of you all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
So the work session is to continue our discussion about sun shelters and piers and so forth. Stuart, what have we got to do tonight?
Yes, sir. Phillip and I discussed the, what, well, of course, he read the minutes from last month, and, and we discussed how we would fit in ordinance, and we have some, a draft, it's very draft, suggested changes to the pier and, and boathouse ordinance on the screen here. The, the reason that we, well, the thing in the ordinance that disallows it is Pier Ordinance B, it says, "Open-sided shelter roofs or gazebo-type structures shall not be placed on private, non-commercial piers." So that is suggested to be deleted. We've come up, we're going to use, we're not going to use the gazebo, we're not going to use sun shelter. We've come up, well, Phillip did, shelter roof. Boathouse, so we'll change the name of the, one, section 151 to boathouses and shelter roofs. Add a number two here and renumber after that, stating, "Shelter roof shall not exceed 400 square feet and 20 feet in height," which mimics the 20 feet up here for the boathouses. On number two, the minimum length from the applicant shoreline should not be less than 100 feet, measured as a straight line from the intersection of the side property line with the mean low water line. And the pier and boathouse and shelter roof shall not be located less than 20 feet from the side property line at mean low water. That's just to make sure that, that everything is on 20 feet, which is what the ordinance says. And then on number four, we will add, and shelter, the boathouse and shelter roof shall be in the most suitable location for surrounding properties, and any adverse impacts to adjoining properties, whether a button or nearby, shall be minimal. And as far as explained in all the nuances in the VMRC regulations, we don't need to duplicate that. I mean, they, they have, the JPA is where that is reviewed at. So we, we, and feel free to jump in, Phillip, I'm leaving anything out. The only permit that the county would, would require is, I guess, if it's a new pier, they need a zoning permit, right?
Correct.
If it's an existing pier, you wouldn't need a zoning permit, but you would need a building permit, because it will make sure that they're going to be strong enough to withstand winds and not follow anybody and things of that nature. So zoning permit if it's a new pier, and if it's not an existing pier, just a building permit from the county. And of course, VMRC would have to approve that permit first, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Do they have to submit a JPA for that?
For the shelter?
Yes, sir.
And in the table of usages, the boathouse ordinance doesn't mention anything about objections, but in the table of usages is where that, that is shown. And I thought, don't tell me I don't have it in here. Yeah, there it is. It has boathouses, mean height and square footage requirement, boathouses not meeting height and square footage requirements. Regarding this 400 square feet, we're not sure if there's, and this is oversight on my part, I didn't think to ask the VMRC this, but I'm not sure if you're allowed to have anything over 400 square feet. It may be just a strict limit. We will investigate that. But instead of, with the uncertainty on the height or the size, we, we would say that the shelter roofs would only be a conditional use if objections from the neighbors are present. So it would mimic, mimic this, so it's kind of hard to see. Top here is R1, and they're not allowed in R1 because R1's in the villages and no waterfront there. Boathouses that are, meet the square footed requirements are conditional use in R4, which is in the Creek, residential, recreational. So we mimic the exact same thing for sun shelters, except it would be sun shelters with no objections and sun shelters with objections. So if, with the objections, it would be conditional use in all of them except R1. And if it was no objections, then it would only be conditional use in R4, because that, that's how Indian Creek wants it.
You just said sun shelters, is that a misstatement?
I'm sorry. Shelter roofs, since the word.
But on, but on the phrase of shelter roofs, let me ask, so this would only apply to things built on docks, correct? Is there any risk of misinterpretation that the shelter, use of the phrase shelter roof might apply to something on land, too? Could we say dock shelter roof? Would that help, or is there not an issue?
I mean, I would certainly explain that even, well, I mean, either way, they'd have to apply for it. And then the regulations would change where the Chesapeake Bay Act would be the enforcing ordinance versus docks or the zoning ordinance. So if you think it would help clarify it to people, then yes, but I think the word from the Chesapeake Bay Act is already out there in regards to, to structures within 100 feet.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's located in the, in, the shelter roof is located in the pier ordinance, and then all this information will be in the boathouse ordinance. So it's kind of, I think it's understood it's over the water.
Okay.
But I really like it because there, there are no, it's just a roof. That's all it is. There's no walls. It's a, it's a, it's a roof that protects you from the sun. But anyway, and that's what the language was in the pier ordinance that we had itself. It said, "Open-sided shelter roofs."
Fine.
Or gazebo-type structure. So we, that's, we just followed the same.
Heidi?
I have a question for Mr. Marston. When you contact adjacent property owners, when somebody will come and want to do this, my concern, first of all, do we, do you, as a rule, contact people across the creek?
If it's.
I mean, because some of these creeks are kind of narrow, and if you start having a bunch of sun shelters there.
We follow VMRC's guidelines on that, where if it's less than 500 feet across, then those across are notified as well.
Great, okay, thank you.
I have a question for him also.
Go ahead.
If I have an existing pier with 400 feet of l-head or some type of appendage, and I have a boathouse, if I want to do a shelter roof, I have to submit another application to VMRC to get that shelter roof approved?
I believe that is correct, but that is, that is something that I do want to clarify with VMRC.
Because I've already had the encroachment.
Right.
And it doesn't increase, increase the encroachment, except vertically.
Sure.
I, I would want to clarify that with VMRC, just like if, if you could even go to the commission to get something larger than 400 square feet. Those are the two things that I want to clarify with VMRC.
But it would be nice if you had all that in place, then all you had to do is go to the county and get a building permit, and you could build it.
Except the neighbors don't have any say.
Yeah, but then we'd lose the ability for the neighbors to object.
Okay.
And the way the neighbor would look at an L with no roof is different than they would look at it with a roof, so.
So now I have a question. So with the JPA, that's when they notify the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's not the conditional use permit, but if, if they were to, if there were objections in the JPA, then that would trigger the conditional use permit process?
Yes, if there were objections to that application, so, so now it goes to Army Corps of Engineers, then us and VMRC. When we received it, we would then determine that they were applying for one of these, would contact the adjoining property owners, even though the agent or homeowner should contact the adjoining property owners. There is a page in the application for them to do so.
One more. So if I'm submitting an application for a new pier with an L-head or some other type of appendage, I can include this in that application as well as for the pier and the L-head?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As long as it was all within that 400 square feet.
Gotcha.
Same thing with the boathouse. The boathouse could be included in that same application as well.
So this is a separate 400 square feet from the 400 square feet of appendages?
No, sir.
It's altogether 400.
Altogether.
In aggregate. That's not going to work, because if you have an L-head that's already 400 square feet, then you've used your 400, you can't get that.
Well, you could put the shelter over top of that L-head, that 400 square feet, but you would be limited to that.
Okay, so it's another 400 square feet, vertical, over top of the horizontal 400 that you already have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm with you.
Same footprint, though.
Same footprint.
Right. Stuart, would you bring back your amended, your original amendments? So let's look at this specific language here. First of all, Phillip, you need to speak to VMRC before we can wrap this up, is that true?
I do want to clarify those two things.
That's fine. So let's go back. Is there any concerns anybody has about the language accomplishing what we've been talking about here? It looks fine to me.
No objection.
Anyone?
So you could have a boathouse and a shelter roof at the same...
Yeah, that picture that I sent out had a boathouse and a shelter roof.
Yeah, yeah. Not very tall, not the way I envisioned some of those boathouses.
The discretion of the chair, I'm going to, Craig, do you have any comments you want to bring in? Does this sound like we're in the right direction?
Something really about the world, just to clarify, you know, with the VMRC, when you make an application for the 400 square feet, if it is opposed to, and no longer qualifies for a statutory exemption as the pier or as stated in the code, and when there is a protest, you do need a full permit and a public notice and ultimately a hearing before the commission. That's if the county approves it, the conditional use permit. So it is two separate structures. I know what you're saying, Roger, you have 400 square feet of the pier, but yeah, it is vertical, and you do need to file a JPA just to get that confirmation from the VMRC that it meets the code exemption.
Okay.
So that's the only thing I have further to add to clarify that.
Thank you, Craig.
So we're going to clarify a height restriction on this as well?
It mimics the boathouse, which is 20 feet.
20 feet from mean low water?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the line we're adding is, "Shelter roof shall not exceed 400 square feet and 20 feet in height."
Okay, good, I didn't see that one. Recommend staff here, should we defer approving this language until you get clarification, or should we approve this and then see if there, anything needs to be adjusted? What's your preference?
I mean, we, I think we can approve the existing language if the commission chooses to, because that doesn't reflect on anything that, that we still have to get questions on. What we would get questions on would actually add to the language.
So you've seen the amendments? Anyone have any motions or anything they want to do, or you want to, you want to put this off? I'd like to move it forward.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amendments and the amended zoning ordinance and send it forward to the board of supervisors with a positive recommendation.
Well, we, we have to hold a public...
Subject to VMRC.
We have to hold a public hearing here first, so after, I mean, you, you need to move to hold a public hearing.
So all of your motion except the last one?
Can these two processes move together? Your consultation with VMRC and the public hearing?
If nothing in the language changed, I would say yes.
Move that we schedule a public hearing on the proposed changes and amendments to the...
Pier and boathouse ordinance.
The boathouse, the pier and boathouse ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second?
Do we need the magic words?
Prob...
Like I said, go ahead.
This motion is made in due consideration of the administrative record before the body, including the planning commission's deliberations and recommendations, and the information received via the public hearing, including statements offered by staff, the applicant, members of the general, members of the public, the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices and the body's legislative prerogative and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
It's been a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. It is carried.
Could I go back to, who, who won the second motion? Was it Roger? I know Heidi was right close with him, okay.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have.
Board of supervisors report, anything that we...
There were no public hearings to the board of supervisors report, but they, the board did approve funding from the capital improvement plan to fund two school buses, and also I think they funded the HVA system upgrades for this building here, for the capital improvement plan.
And as you probably saw in the rappahannock record per our discussion at the capital outlaying discussion in the spring, they're potentially looking forward to moving into a bond for some of the capital projects that need to be done, because we simply don't have the money to do any of that stuff, all of which we acknowledge is pretty darn important. So they are moving forward with that. The finance, the finance director who was hired in June has already left. She was having some health issues, and so they are, they have posted the position again for finance director for the county and for the schools. Hopefully, they'll be able to find somebody to fill that position fairly quickly. Meanwhile, the UHY, the audit company that has been on board, help with the schools, continues to be on board, keeping the process going. They're still finding invoices, but...
We also lost a clerical staff member from the finance department of the school board.
Yeah. Any public comments before we wrap up here? Anything on, anybody online wish to address the commission? How quiet on the western front.
Mr. Chairman.
Looks good. Good, thank you.
Is that Charles?
See, I like him. Hi, Charles.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we adjourn.
Has been a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We're out of here. Thank you all.